Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, November 20th, 2023. Roll call?
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker? Mr. Holger?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shebeck?
If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin this evening with the public hearing for the conditional use permit request for a child daycare facility at 264-4-2650 East Aurora Road. It's an opportunity for the applicant to come forward and make your presentation to the community as to what it is that you're looking for this evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan. I am here with 814 Development. As you mentioned, we are requesting a conditional use permit approval for a proposed daycare. The daycare would be at 2466 East Aurora Road. We are the developer, so we would be developing on behalf of BrightPath Kids. They are a childcare operator that operates significantly in Canada and are expanding their operations in the U.S. They are currently operating, I believe, out of six states, and Ohio is their target market right now for their suit-to-build buildings. So should this get approved, it would be one of probably six to eight BrightPath Kids in the Ohio market that would be coming online as soon as possible, as soon as we get all the approvals. The proposed building is 13,582 square feet. At absolute maximum, that would accommodate 232 students. That would be unlikely to ever have 232 students in the building at that time, but legally the license would be obtained for that many students. That would also include about 28 staff members. Again, not 28 staff members at any one time, but they are shift workers, so morning, afternoon, that sort of thing. The students would be aging from about six weeks old to five years old, and then there is an after-school care component. The operational hours are from about 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. By our calculations and your code, we would read that as having need, a requirement of 75 parking spaces. Typically, this tenant seeks to have between 35 and 40 parking spaces for this building, so that does significantly exceed what they believe their demand will be. In our current proposal, we are proposing 51 parking spaces to be built immediately, and then there would be room for an additional 24 spaces in the future should demand ever require it. Understanding that your code does want this to be somewhat of a pedestrian-friendly area, we thought a reduction in parking might be appropriate here, but we don't need a full parking reduction. We just would like to land bank them for future use if it ever became a requirement. I know we can kind of go through some of the specific setbacks, but that was generally the gist. We would be using the existing curb cut on Aurora, so no new curb cuts there, and that would be shared with the senior center that would be behind us on the parcel. We have made accommodations to allow for a sidewalk in front of the property. Currently, there is not a sidewalk, although there is a bus stop, but there doesn't appear to be any bench or any shelter for the bus stop, so it's just sort of a sign. So of course, we could, there could be room for a bench or additional landscaping. My understanding is you guys are looking to make that a little bit more pedestrian-friendly, so we are welcome welcoming to that and would accommodate that. That is, that is the gist.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's an opportunity for any member of the community to come forward and speak for or against, or ask any questions regarding this request this evening. Come forward and name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Fran Gardner, and I'm from GV Land Holdings. I think I have been before this august body before. So we are the current title owner of the property. I just wanted to say that, you know, we, during this long process, have been involved with lots of, lots of potential buyers for this property, but we feel that 814 has been absolutely the best partner. I think that they are a quality team, and they have demonstrated to us a quality product that they expect to develop on this, on this land. We, we have worked with them. They've been great to work with in terms of providing us with information, providing us with drawings, things like that, and we have, we are certainly in agreement with them to handle the issue of the easement through our property so that ingress and egress to the childcare center can be off of our driveway rather than, you know, off of Aurora Road requiring another curb cut. So we have some things to work out in terms of getting an easement and some snow removal issues, things like that, but they've been great to work with, and so we, I just want this group to know that we fully support the project and this team, this development team. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the community that would like to come forward? Now is the chance. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:08, and we'll roll into the work session, which is, the first item is the conditional use permit request. Megan, let me start by saying you did a wonderful presentation there and gave all the information that I wish that everybody would always give when they, when they come forward, so thank you for that. Is there anything else that you'd like to share before we go down the line here?
No, fire away.
All right, so a couple things first. As the motion this evening will have a condition on it, we'll actually have a couple conditions on it. One will be a consolidation of the three parcels into one that will be required, and two, a dedication of the right-of-way for the widening. I think those are pretty straightforward things, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Yep.
I think you also are aware that you're only here this evening for the conditional use request and not a site plan approval, but you did submit a site plan, so I'm just going to throw a couple of things at you so that when you do move forward, assuming that you get the zoning certificate approval from city council, access easement, as was mentioned, should have that in place, stormwater detention design, make sure that it includes the land bank parking, even though you won't be paving that now, it should be designed so we don't have to, especially if you're doing underground, which it appears you are, you don't want to have to go back later and change that. It would be my preference to see this whole development slid about five feet further away from the street, and decrease that 10-foot parking setback in the back to five foot so that there's a little more space between the sidewalk around your building and the sidewalk in the street for some landscaping.
Reduce the rear yard setback by five feet to accommodate that?
Yeah, in order, or some way to accommodate that. I know there's not a specific requirement for the setback in this zoning district. Landscaping will be very important here in basically three locations that I've noted, noted. One, in the front that we just spoke about. Two, on the east side where the playground area is and it's fenced into the, to that property line. And on the west side, and you have a very small space between the parking and the property line where the driveway is, you may want to look at actually getting an easement with them, not just for the access, but to allow you to landscape beyond the property line there. You have five feet, so it's not impossible to do a few things, and you're not going to have anything big there because there are sightlines, but it might be important to look at that. And then, and I just sketched that, I thought it might be nice if that sidewalk along the west side of the building continues down to the parking area so everybody parking in those spaces don't have to walk across that little piece of grass that you have there. And I can show, I can show you where that is if, if it doesn't make sense what I just said.
Continue the parking, or the sidewalk down the west side of the parking lot?
Just, just this little piece right here.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
So you have some way to get all these people without having to walk and cut through all those cars?
Yep, yep.
Again, that's for future consideration, and again, we're not voting on that, but I thought I would throw it out since you gave it to me. All right. Ed, any comments for Megan this evening?
I do not.
Steve?
No, I'm good. I think you hit on everything.
Sorry? Are you welcome?
No, that's fine.
Craig?
The only question just for this committee is, so the 75 parking spaces, it's common practice to land bank them and see if you need to use them or not. So to build only 51 and have land bank for 24, that's a common practice or acceptable?
Actually, we've used it on projects that we've done in my office, and we see it a lot, especially when you know that there's more parking. Our code requires a lot.
Yeah, we're a little high.
Yeah. But the good, but the good thing is, is they have the space for it, so if there was ever a need, we started, or they saw there was a need, or the space is there, and it's easy to add it, so. And does keep more green space, and it's a little friendlier, so.
Yeah, I think our, hopefully our codes will change over the years.
Right, I think that's a target. The child daycare parking standard is a target during the zoning code, you know, because right now we have the Creek Site Drive applicant for a child daycare making an appeal to the BZA.
For parking?
For parking. We have a parking study, we have a use study, and they're, they're going the route of an appeal. Megan and I discussed that. They opted to land bank and not subject themselves to the area.
And which we, which I appreciate that. David, anything?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Didn't we talk about, Lynn, you could probably help me out with this, didn't we talk about that in this district that we didn't want any parking spaces going all the way up to the street, or am I thinking of something else?
No, we.
Because when I look at this, this, this parking spaces go right up to 82, and I know on the downtown development, weren't we trying to keep cars off of the main roads for aesthetics for the whole downtown development?
Yes, and the standard is that there should be no parking in the front setback, so just the way this site has, is laid out and designed for this use, there's really no way for them to make this work without having the parking to the side of the building. I think this, in terms of this location, this is really practically perfect. It may not be ideal in that sense that all the parking is to the rear of the building, but with the drop-off and pickup kind of traffic pattern, just the nature of this use, there has to be some ability to circulate in this way on the site.
And the main drop-off, the main drop-off is at that small parking lot along 82 there, correct?
Correct.
So they're going to be driving in over there and then through the whole parking lot to that spot, so everyone's going to be driving basically to that front lot is where everyone's going to be driving.
That's going to be their hope. When you come in, you're going to hope and get.
You're going to go into that one right up there.
So we have reoriented this parking lot about 37 times.
Maybe 50, probably.
Yeah, I will say, we attempted to try to find a way to not have parking in the front, because I do understand the pedestrian nature of the district. Unfortunately, with the way that the playground has to connect to multiple areas of the building, there is just limited ways to lay it out and to get to the parking requirement, and there is a playground square footage requirement for licensing.
Right.
That we, we sort of had to do it this way. A slightly more advantageous for us layout was actually having the building north-south, but when we spoke with Lynn and worked through that, we realized that that wasn't good for the, the plan, you know, the, your guys' comprehensive plan, and so this allowed us to have the frontage on Aurora Road with sort of the articulation of the architecture facing the road. The beauty would be there, you would see it as you walk through, but there was a need for some parking, specifically the handicap parking, to be nearest the door. We have talked about perhaps adding some additional paving, some nice pavers, or some sort of knee wall, something that would make it feel, you know, well landscaped and distract a bit from the fact that the parking is there, but there really was no way to avoid it altogether.
Right.
And I think that's, Mark's point about landscaping will be critical to achieve the end result that we want. There just really, truly, there was no other way to accommodate this use.
Again, just thinking for 10 seconds here, but I know these parking spaces here are all down the line, so that's 25 spaces. I didn't really count here. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so it's about 20 spaces, about 18 to 20.
24 spaces.
In the front. So it's the same amount of parking spaces, right? Just thinking.
You need the handicap parking at, at the front door.
If the front door was the front corner right here, if the front door was the corner, not the side of the building, all of this parking right here could be handicapped right next to the door, and then you don't have the parking in the front like we've tried to eliminate. You still have the same number of parking spots, but now they're right next to the door. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, you could take a halfway position between that and say, get rid of four or six of the land bank spaces and turn them into real, and, and land bank four, six of them at the front also, the closest to the road, and slide the handicap down, so it's still along that base of the building, and, but you've picked up 18 or 27 feet of green in that area.
Right. I'm just thinking that, I don't know what other development's going to come in, but I know we've talked about trying to keep the cars off the main roads, and I'm just thinking that here's one development going in now, early, that if we put the parking spots right at the very front of the road, it sort of sets the precedence for everything else coming into the downtown area, that anything built can have cars right along the road. That's, that's my two cents. And then the other question I have is, you said that the, you have the capability for 232 students, but that'll never happen.
Not never, but.
I'm just curious why, because I know I have friends that own Goddard Schools, and they are at max capacity with six-month wait, so I'm curious why you wouldn't want to maximize it. If you could get 232, I'm surprised, so if 232 is the maximum, what number do you foresee being here?
We're hoping that the enrollment will still be 232, but just the odds that every single student is healthy on the same day, and because some of those students are for after school, they're not there at that point. They're up there all day. So my point was, there's not 232 parents dropping off in the morning.
Oh, because there's.
It's 232 in, in max enrollment, but, you know, one family has three kids there, and the other family just does after school, and the other family had Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so I was just saying that in regards to.
Because you'll hit max enrollment, like that.
That's what we anticipate.
Yes.
They've looked at the, the area, and they know there's a demand.
Yeah, there's weights everywhere.
Yeah.
Okay. That was my question, I was just confused by that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it, the hope is that 232 enrolled all the time.
I'm sure you will.
But, yeah, yeah, it's just not 232 parents every single morning.
At the same time, 7 o'clock, gotcha, okay.
Anything else, David?
I think that's it.
Yeah, you may, you may want to consider taking a look at that for your 38th iteration of maybe getting rid of a few of the land bank spaces along the southern property and land banking a few of them up near the, the street. You'll still be able to maintain the handicap parking across the front because you have one, two, three, four next to the handicap. I know you like to have as much parking as both to the entrance, I, I get that.
Yeah.
But maybe an in-between, it's, it's at least taking, worth taking a look at from our, our opinion.
And these parking spots down here, really, with that sidewalk walking up, it's really, it's not far from the front door, these spots down here either.
It's not as close.
They're just not as close.
Down.
Yeah, but that's still very.
You and I probably no problem, mom with kid in stroller and a winter coat that's crying and talking. She wants to be right next to the door, and I get that.
Listen, I dropped my kids off at daycare for years. I get it.
I mean, how would you feel about that, David, if even just two of those, two of those, the northernmost two?
Well, yeah, I mean, it picks up another nine feet of.
But we are saying we want to shift it back regardless, the whole.
Yeah.
Even if you shift it, I think.
You'd like those two gone.
I think we're setting precedence by having parking all the way out to the main road.
Well, we did it with DeVita Dialysis. We have a turnaround there.
But it looks farther away from here on the map.
It is, it is setback a bit further.
It looks like it's a bit much further.
Something for them to study when they're going forward. Lynn, what else would you like to share, if anything, on this?
I left this arrow on each of your spots, just to sort of orient yourself to where this site is a little bit better, because to Mr. Crowe's point, whatever we approve as a site plan on, on the daycare site, will be setting the standard for the adjacent site to the west that's also vacant. So in terms of establishing the building setback and really, say, the depth that we're allowing for landscaping in the location of the sidewalk, and maybe if we say, okay, well, we might want streetlights at some point on the street side of the sidewalk, sort of what, however that lays out on this site, it'll end up being the same on the other vacant sites. And then I also just provide this for reference, if you look at the front property lines, you can sort of see why the request that Mark spoke of for a right-of-way widening is being requested to accommodate the, a public sidewalk. It's already pushed back on the other vacant site because of the deceleration lane accessing the, the retirement center driveway, but for some reason, at the corner of Commons and 82 at DeVita Dialysis, we did not acquire the right-of-way. I think there's an easement probably for that sidewalk, but we don't want to do that again. Even though there are no plans whatsoever in the future for widening the pavement on 82, we, we do want the sidewalk to be public and would, would desire that all the way to the shopping center, Church Street intersection. There's no, there's nothing clean about this frontage in terms of achieving that goal of some consistency, but this is an opportunity to think ahead, to do the best we can with this site plan and how it sort of set the stage for the other properties.
Is that round part of DeVita, is that parking in that round part there, or, because it doesn't look like that would be.
I think it's just a turnaround kind of feature.
Right, it doesn't look like that's parking, actually.
No, it's not, it's, it's a turnaround.
Yeah, because the parking looks like it's definitely farther off the road, way farther off the road.
The building is way, is much further back.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's, that's really my biggest concern, because we've really worked, we're working so hard to create this downtown look.
Well, yeah, and the thing about this is, and Megan's not saying it out loud to us, but first we've required an outrageous level of parking spaces, and say we want the building at the front edge and the parking behind, because it's pedestrian-oriented, but this is not a pedestrian-focused use, and nor is parking requirement. So, I mean, what I heard her say is ideally they'd like to only have 40 parking spaces, but they're going to go with 51 just because of where we're at with our standards, so, I mean, we're talking out of both sides of our mouth at some juncture with, with a regulation.
Land skate more, land bank more parking along that front parcel. I mean, I think it's a, it's a win-win. There's no way we're ever getting rid of all that parking along that side, but the further we pull it back, the better the standard is set for when we develop the other, the other pieces.
I think if you just take away four, those, two, four spots.
Two on each side and slide it down.
I, I think, and not to ever put parking spots there, I mean, just take away four spots or further away from the street, I just think it's so close to the street.
Well, I think they have to land bank in order to meet the requirement without having to go to the BZA for the number of spaces that our code requires.
So what we could do is we could consider those front four spaces land banked as well and not find another spot for them on the room, and then in the event that all 75 spaces become a required amount, we'd come back before you and either ask for a reduction saying we don't want to make those front four, or we build them, but those would be the kind of the, the opportunity there is, we don't actually replace those four anywhere else on the site, we just land bank that.
Correct, yeah.
And I think that would be fine with us.
You'd have to kind of rearrange it a little.
I'd have to confirm with the tenant that they have no issue, but I truly don't believe it'll cause trouble because they don't have, this is exceeding their parking expectations.
You'd have to rearrange it, obviously, because you don't want to land bank the handicap accessible parking. You flip that around and that's all.
Yeah.
And then you'd pick up 18 feet from those two spaces and another five by sliding it back.
Yeah.
23 feet more of green space across that front area in front of the parking. Okay, Lynn, anything else on this?
No.
Don't go too far away.
Okay.
All right, it's, it's 7:25. That's the, done with the work session. We're going to roll into the regular meeting agenda. The first part of that is the approval of the minutes. We're going to start with, from October 16th, the Planning Commission meeting that was rescheduled from September 28th, 2023, but held on October 16th, 2023. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes from that meeting? Seeing none, those will be accepted as submitted. Next would be the review and the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting from October 16th, 2023. Are there any comments or corrections to those minutes?
No.
Seeing none, those minutes will be accepted as submitted. Second item on the regular meeting agenda, public participation, opportunity for members of the audience to speak before Planning Commission. Seeing none, we'll roll into item number three, the conditional use permit request for the child daycare facility, 2644 to 2650 East Aurora Road. Megan, is there anything else that you would like to share with Planning Commission regarding your request this evening?
No.
It's okay, just wanted to be sure. Ed, anything else?
No, sir.
Steve?
I have nothing, thank you.
Craig?
No, no, sir.
And David?
I'm good, thank you.
I would like to make the following motion. Upon representations made by the applicant and their representative, along with the submitted conditional use request and application for 814 CRE LLC, East Aurora Road, permanent parcel numbers 64-00626, 64-01782, and 64-01198, date stamped received November 1st, 2023, I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a child daycare facility in the C5 Mixed Residence Business District with the following conditions. One, consolidation of the three parcels into one. Two, dedication of the right-of-way widening. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Steve, discussion. Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Holger?
Yes.
Recommendation 4-0, it actually has to be reviewed and approved by City Council, and that will be.
We, we do not have the certification of the ballot, so when we get that, we can put it on a council agenda.
Okay.
I would expect that even this week, but.
So perhaps in December?
Yeah, probably in December. We have a few council meetings in December, we.
And is there a need for me to attend to that, or is that?
There is not.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
She says so. All right, well, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, guys.
Hang out if you want, or head out, that's up to you.
I think we'll head out.
Communications and miscellaneous. Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Steve?
I have nothing, thank you.
Craig?
No, no, sir.
David?
Nothing, thank you, sir.
Lynn?
So I think we are headed for having a special meeting, we can see the quorum on the fourth. Council will be considering some of the duties and powers of boards and commissions, and for that to happen relative to one of the chapters on the Environmental Commission, there needs to be a review by Planning Commission. It's just the way the process is set up in our code.
Wait, wait, Planning Commission needs to review what?
The duties and powers section of the Environmental Commission, so.
We've never done that.
I know. So there's a section in 1103, it's in the planning and zoning column, and there was a section in Chapter 143, we, this is cleaning this off.
So are we taking away that responsibility from Planning Commission, they have to review the Environmental Commission?
I think what will take away, I think we're changing the powers and duties. I think what will take away, I think we're changing the powers and duties. And I don't know if we're moving it into chapter 143. I think we are. And we're moving, we're repealing one of these sections. Number one, we can't have two sections. Number two, they say different things. There is a section in the code that I think we can review as part of the code update is what would come to planning commission for recommendation to council and what would not. We, there's another section on that, that indicates the parks and rec commission duties that I think council will review, but that is not in, that's only in the codified ordinances. It's not in the zoning code. So my guess is we're moving all this to sort of the administrative code and out of the zoning code.
Sense.
You're just victims of this being in the title 11. So then we have another item which is called amendments. And that really refers to rezonings and tax amendments. And that is in chapter 12. There's only two chapters in that section. And that really does need to be in the zoning code. So again, this is just sort of cleaning up how these items are laid out in our codes. We also have amendments to the, to code enforcement, to zoning code enforcement, but that will be probably on our 1218 meeting. This is all just the process that is outlined in the code. That it's, we want to amend something in the planning and zoning code. It has to come, it has to go through a planning commission consideration.
And why are we doing this on December 4th versus the 18th? Is there so many meetings and a deadline that they're trying to meet because council has to listen to it three times before?
Exactly.
So why isn't everything coming on the 4th? Why is some stuff coming on the 18th?
I think we can't get it done by then.
But, but if it can be done on the 18th and still get on the ballot, why?
That one is, this enforcement one is sort of a new, it's a, it's a whole separate issue from the duties and powers.
Okay. So do we officially have a meeting on December the 4th?
Yes.
At 7 o'clock here in the chambers?
Yes.
And I'm assuming we're going to get a packet very soon that's going to give an explanation, list the, list these sections and what it says and what we want it to say or where we want it to go.
Because it, it has to go to city council on, what is the next, is there a council meeting next week, David?
Uh, yes, I believe there's a council meeting next week. And then we also have the, and it goes right to the 5th.
5th. Okay. So it has to be on the council agenda next week. So.
So, but it has to be on the council agenda next week on the 5th?
It has to go to council.
Oh, the next week after our, our 4th, December 4th meeting?
No, it has to go to council first before it comes to this board. They have to kick it back to you and then go back to them on the 5th.
All right.
Council next week, planning commission a week after, council.
So you're hoping that everything will be presented in a way that makes sense and understands the planning commission so we can make a recommendation. We don't vote on it. We need to make a recommendation to.
To say, hey, that sounds like a rational thing that you wrote there.
And if for some, just off the cuff, if for some reason there's an issue and we're not ready to do that, then, then does that kill this in getting on?
No, no. It will.
Just delays it.
It just delays it.
Okay. I'm not saying that's going to happen. I'm just trying to understand this process.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we will have a project, a site plan for review on the 18th. I'll probably on the 4th, bringing forward a couple of just informational items relative to the code update.
Oh.
In addition.
But the 4th meeting is specifically really related to these planning and zoning changes or updates and revisions?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
So the, the meeting on the 4th is at what time?
7.
So it's 7 as always?
Yeah, like a regular.
Okay. Just want to make sure I put that in my calendar.
Is any advertisement required because we're discussing, discussing zoning changes or?
At council level.
Only? They have to do that? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Lynn. Need a motion to excuse Michael from this evening's meeting?
I'll motion that.
From Craig, a second?
I'll say it.
From Ed, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Holmwood?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. I hope everyone has a very nice Thanksgiving holiday weekend, family and friends, whatever you do. Enjoy and be safe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Agreement at 7:35.